So Dr. Harrison, over to you.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. As we know, tonight was designed to be a follow-up workshop to our last budget meeting. And in doing so, we were not prepared to do any type of presentation. However, if trustees have the desire, we're certainly ready to go. But one thing that I think is important that I want to highlight that we have not discussed thus far is that when we consider the consequences of a budget that doesn't pass, we always have to review what a contingent budget amounts to. So if by chance, we had the unfortunate or misfortune that on May 18th, that the majority of our voters voted no, we could potentially go to a contingency budget if the board did not opt to go out for another vote. In a contingency budget, it requires the district to levy no more than the previous year's levy that would require the district to make cuts of approximately $1.4 million and would result in a budget increase of only $384,000 from the 2021 budget. In a contingent budget, there would be no new equipment purchases, no community use of our facilities, and no capital improvements unless it was an emergent situation. Other necessary cuts would also certainly have deep impacts on staffing and student programs, curriculum, professional development initiatives, and other purchases that we have spoken of making throughout this budget process. If the district does not have sufficient fund balance to offset these cuts, even a partial offset could result in a position of fiscal stress, which is a designation by the state office of the state comptroller. So this really just simply speaks to the importance of this process, the importance of community engagement. As we know, we have a number of budget forums that will come up. We will certainly seek to educate our community on the budget and answer any questions that they may have. Additionally, in the coming weeks, we'll be mailing out a budget newsletter to every community member with all the facts associated with the budget. That communication will be sent in both English and in Spanish. And additionally, if any community members have any questions related to the budget, we would invite them to email us at budget@irvingtonschools.org. Other than that, Mr. Friedman, I think it's opportunity for any discussion or question that the trustees may have this evening.
Thank you. As we talked about at the end of our last session, trustees have the opportunity to reflect on last week's presentation. So to the extent there are further questions or follow-up questions, now is the time before we vote on the budget adoption. So Dave, over to you if you have any follow-up questions. Okay. Beth?
Thank you. I know that, you know, in the past, as we've discussed this budget, we've had some conversations about the PEA line at Main Street School. And in thinking about discussions we've had about this budget, I thought it might be a good time to just sort of review, if we could remind the public of some of the issues raised, I think specifically due to the location of the Main Street School gym, which is different than any other place on the district property.
Sure. So thank you. It's a good question, Beth. In this budget, we've proposed the addition of a monitor at Main Street School. The monitor is a need that we've identified over recent years and have spoken of in past budget forums. When we consider the, just the physical layout of the Main Street School campus, we have to acknowledge that it's a, the gymnasium is a freestanding building. And I have grave concern that if there was to be a significant injury, that we would only have one adult that would be present with a class of students. If there was another type of emergency and if our teacher was injured or taken ill and was unable to respond, we would be leaving emergency response to fourth and fifth graders. And while I know our students are quite capable and their instincts would probably lead us well, we believe it is of critical importance to ensure that we have a second adult in that space to be able to help monitor and supervise our students. In doing so, I'm sure there will be a value add to the PE program as well. When we think about this position, we're also looking at an efficient way of adding it to our employee roles by not necessarily hiring a full-time employee. We already have some fantastic monitors that work at the school that support the lunch and recess program. So we'd be able to seek to extend some of those individuals' days by having one person work the morning, another person work the afternoon. And by doing so, not only are we able to employ and secure some folks whom we value, who really contribute to the school community by providing them much-needed additional employment, but because they are part-time positions, we are also avoiding the need to add health insurance in those particular cases. So when we look at it, it's a relatively reasonable cost, the figure just north of $20,000. And I think it's a great investment in the safety of our children. And as I said, I can't imagine there not being a value add to the PE program at Main Street School.
Right. And I guess I wanted to add like a visual aspect to it. It's actually not only in a separate building, but it's downstairs. And the entrance goes out to like another street entirely from, yeah, from the street that Main Street School faces. So yeah, as composed, any other gymnasium, I think, on the campuses within the envelope of the school building.
Yeah, it's a fairly isolated location, a great gymnasium, but it's an isolated location. And like you say, not only is it separate from the school building behind, you know, it's a series of locked doors. It is a very secure building, we want to add.
Yes.
But it is removed and it is down a couple flights of steps from the ground level where Main Street School resides. And if one was to exit the building, they would be leaving out onto Ferris Street adjacent to the police department.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all for me.
Thank you. Michael?
I'll piggyback a little bit off of what Beth was just asking. So thank you for reiterating, you know, on that topic. I had two questions. The first is around a big picture concept that the board and administration has been talking about to some degree over the last few years. You know, basically that is that over the last, that we, after the great recession, grew back staffing and programming and then grew it further. You know, meanwhile, our enrollment has been flat or slightly down. And we find ourselves in a fortunate place with this budget, much better than we would have thought a year ago when we were looking forward to, to the, looking at the challenges that we faced. So I wanted to put out the idea that this is the year that our district can, can sort of, without too much challenge, make a pivot towards the concept of not growing our personnel numbers without corresponding adjustments or cuts or because of breakages and, or cost avoidance. So in the case of the, the new special ed teacher or aides, you, you as an administration made the case that it's offset by other costs that we would be facing. And it's also better programmatically for, for our students. So I think there's a lot of support. And similarly, you know, with the PEA, I, you've made the case, I definitely support the addition of that, of that position. And the number is very small. So it's not really about the cost that I'm raising this topic. It's the idea that because in fact, the cost is so small and in the other cases where there's personnel hires, we're, we're saying there's an offset to do the same for that position. And so that you can leave this year or enter this year with a budget that it's approved that this board and the administration board going forward can say the, the goal is to not grow our personnel ranks without identifying those offsetting costs. And so my ask in this case is, what if we take that sum, which I'm not saying that we don't spend up to the cap, which has been a strategy then until we discuss otherwise, is one that the district has continued to follow for, for a number of reasons. But to put that sum into the, into a reserve and, you know, money's fungible and to say that we'll find from our existing budget, the funding for the PEA.
Do you clarify what sum you meant?
The, the cost of hiring a PEA rather than 22,000 being new money, that's from existing money.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could speak.
So Michael, that's sort of, I mean, it actually, that's sort of what we're doing because with the, the capital piece, the 100,000, that piece is going to go into the reserve because we are not, because we didn't have to add, we're not adding programs like you're suggesting. And then the following year, we can make a decision how to use that, that fund. So like, that would be in the budget. And then the following year, we decide, do we want to continue to do that? Or do we want to continue to do something different? So that is the similar strategy. So we went to the cap just to make sure that we had, you know, we have, we don't know what the year after is going to be, right? So that's exactly what we're doing.
Well, so you're talking about the 100,000 for the
Because that's, that's the number that we use to balance the budget at the end, right? So, you know, when, when we were looking at all the additional revenue for state aid, instead of putting it back into the budget for some other program that we're not sure of yet, we did put it into a reserve. So that's strategy. We also increased the workers' comp number, if you recall. And ultimately, some of that may flow into the reserve, it may not. I probably will use all of it, but if I don't, it would flow into the reserve. And you have to keep in mind, any surplus always flows into a reserve or into unbalanced. So it's not like it's lost. It's all part of our, our
I, I think that's a really helpful explanation in the sense of, what I'm trying to put opinion for the administration, the board is on the personnel piece, that when we hire personnel, that there, there's a corresponding benefits piece that sticks with the district on, you know, whether it's healthcare or related other benefit costs. And so that's, you know, sometimes when I talk to community members or even other board members or other circumstances, we find ourselves in time of budget. They're like, well, this year, why don't we not spend this amount? Or why don't, you know, and that approach is just a, a single year. And what we know is that we try and work strategically, that we, we look at things not just in this moment, but over time. And so I'm specifically citing the idea of with our personnel, new personnel positions in this budget, I guess what is there, there are four of them. Three of the four have been described as having an offset. And the fourth one, even though small, is not. And precisely the reasons you say, I'm saying, let's, let's move that number rather than calling it new money into the existing, because we know money flows through anyways to, to the reserve. In this case, we're more explicitly saying, we're going to take this money and put it in a reserve. And then the board and the administration going forward has and, and can communicate to, to the community the idea that we are in a position where we, effort is not to grow the number of new personnel unless there's a corresponding offset in, in the budget. And we have people every year who leave the district, they retire, they go on to other jobs, they, you know, for whatever reason. And those create breaks and, and we hire new people. So that, that's not new money. That's, you know, we consider that that's from our existing push ahead budget. And so going forward, you know, we have, we used to have as many as 2,000 students. Now we're down to, you know, 17, 25 or something. And meanwhile, we have more teachers and more who are doing great job and staff who are doing great job. But there's a limit to how many people we're hiring and I'm suggesting, and we've talked about collectively, we're kind of at that number where if we add people, we should really work to say, you know, that we're not just, you know, there was a period where it was three or four or five people a year. This year happens to be four. But we're, we're trying to say, no, we're kind of hit the limit of, of the number of people we're hiring unless we can justify it by offsetting costs.
Right. Just keeping on, one other thing too, that if you look back to two or three presentations ago, when I present the push aheads, there were changes to the push ahead. Not everything was, you know, is an increase. There were decreases. I highlighted some of them in the presentation. I don't walk you through every single one because that would take forever. But there's, there were plenty of them. And we had been prepared to include that in the superintendent's budget before we had the state aid revenue. So you, you realize that we did find offsets for that because we, we've believed in it. And that was one of the, the things we pushed for. So we were able to fund it before this increase and that's how strongly we felt for it. But you, and I understand your point, but when we do the budget, we look at the push ahead and it's not just, oh, we had it last year, we're going to keep it. There were things we definitely decreased.
Yeah.
And then we do look at positions and who's replacing someone by retiring and all of that is included in the planning. So while I may not show you every piece of what the calculations are, they're all there. And a lot of them are noted in the budget backup sheet. So if you in the community are looking at those sheets that on the bottom, so there's a lot of notes there that I put for those reasons.
Right. So, so in fact, you're telling me that because of where we found ourselves before the new state aid money came in, essentially this would be funded by, okay, so I mean, because that, that it's really, it's not about the money. The money's there. It's about the idea that we are going forward with, with the idea of that we're not hiring more personnel than we have, which is the highest number that the district has ever had in its history, without looking, like you have said, you've done for all four positions with, for corresponding offsets.
Right. And in a sense, we're not really hiring more people also because we already have recess monitors. So really what we're just doing is increasing their hours. So if they were, you know, an 11 to one person now, they might be a nine to one. And if they were an 11 to one now, they might be 11 to three. So they're really only increasing by two hours on either end of the day, in a sense, the employees. So we're really not increasing the number of people either. We're just increasing their hours by four per day.
All right. Well, I so, I so appreciate your, your explanation. This has happened a couple of times during its budget process. So when we dig in, it's actually kind of affirming to understand more deeply the work that you're doing. And I guess I would just ask, is there anyone who disagrees conceptually with what the district is doing this year? Which is they have found offsets or, or cost avoidance for any of the personnel positions that have been added? Because in essence, you can then say this year, when, you know, someone's running for reelection and talking about different aspects of what the district has accomplished, that we, we have reached a point in which the district feels that it can, you know, has, has a, you know, a strong program and strong, strong staffing. And that's the degree that, that we go budget to budget. We have the strategic view of we don't need to grow our personnel much refining like we have this year. Offsets are costly.
I mean, Michael, I think that's just certainly how it played out this year. I, I think it's hard to, to talk year over year, what that may look like and what our district objectives may be three years from now, five years from now in terms of programs we want to support and personnel. So I, I think at a baseline level, that's certainly a goal that, that we have and that obviously you just heard Carol walk through what they looked at this year in terms of doing that. But I, I don't think, you know, to stick to that rigid approach every year would, that's, you know, maybe, it may not make sense year over year. I mean, obviously, if we look to expand a program, develop a new program because of a need or a community interest, that may not be able to then have corresponding cuts in order just, just for, that could just may not be feasible. So I think, you know, in the abstract, yes, but I, I don't think it's something that could be looked at as a hard and fast rule year over year.
Yeah. No, I think, I think we know that any given year circumstances change. I think it's more about the orientation of the administration and the board. And that if going into a budget year, you're looking at, okay, we'd like to do X and that's in this case expands the program that in, in that we would look to see first, are there ways to offset or are there cost avoidance pieces? Is there some piece of it that that becomes part of the, of the calculation and developing? But I always thought it was.
Yeah, I would say from Michael.
I've had your five budgets and I always feel like that is the case. In fact, and I, I think I, I agree with you right from a fundamental standpoint, absolutely. Like I think this is in my background, like it seems very, you know, obvious to me that that is part of budgeting practice in general, especially in school budgets. When you, especially with staffing in particular, because you can't have more bodies than you have kids, et cetera, like you were pointing out so, so clearly. However, to Brian's point, I think it's really important to, it's, it's less about any given year. It's more about a practice, right? So as a practice between the board and administration, when introducing a new staff, new staffing initiative, that new staffing initiative should be well thought out from, well, beginning of the process, as it usually is in my experience, and then fleshed out thoroughly to how it can be, what's the word? What's the money phrase?
Pause what? Yeah, physically sustainable.
Pause new science, sustainable at that point. Because I mean, I think that's ultimately your point, right?
Right.
We want to, we want to make sure that we sustain really strong instruction and making sure that with a responsible budget. So I agree with that concept in general, but I don't think that we should lock ourselves in to that. But the practice as a whole should be, you know, one that is always taking that into consideration.
Yeah. But also keep in mind when we have these conversations, and I disagree with the philosophy. A lot of what you're speaking to, back work that happens the months leading up to before we even start to have the conversations. And I think Carol gave a nice illustration how we arrived at this year. But I also want to draw our attention to when we have our annual audits and we think of the efficiency of how we spend our, our budget and that, you know, we are within, Carol would say 98% of our, our spends on average annually. And if we're in a position, I think where we are starting to roll over a lot of money each year into reserves, that we would speak to the fact that I think that we would have much more latitude to find efficiencies. I think over the years, we found lots of opportunities to trim costs, to be able to be more efficient in our expenditures and our investments in our facilities and people. So I think we have to look at this holistically. And I think that's just one reminder of the ways in which we do budget as whether it's administration or the board and the administration as a team in that we are utilizing our budget funds well and that there aren't years where we have billions of dollars that where we haven't spent or as we anticipated we would because truly we have gold, which are those dollars that we raise practices are left remaining to be able to support the needs that are before the district.
Yeah. I, I think as you regularly do for, for us, you can sit at this time, the, the, you know, I was so impressed with the work. I think we all are with the work that you and your team do for, for our district. And, and I, I think we, you have helped surface for us. And I think as you've said, David, that, you know, from year to year, as long as that's like, I think more front and center than, I, I think when I first joined the board, there were calls and even still from some folks in the community that are more arbitrary. And there's also a piece where we were in a different place in the district. And so now that we have, you know, 213, you know, members of IFA and another, you know, large number of folks who are in, and our, our staff and our administration numbers have grown. Like there, there has to be kind of a, a, a limit to how much, there's only so much you can do in the day. So when you think of one program, the day is already filled, things come and go. So I think that's just, you know, I don't need to belabor it, but I think we can say this year, we've accomplished that based on what Ms. Stein shared with us. And it's something that I think you have the opportunity going forward to do, which is, you know, from that fiscal responsibility point, that you are, as a district, doing a great job of supporting students. And you don't necessarily need to keep growing the number of folks who work in the industry.
You know, and Michael, and, and we've had, I think, that conversation also going back probably two years ago when we looked at the, the long-term staffing plan, which, you know, I think, you know, we'll also read it in time, which helps guide that work in terms of, you know, where, where we want to be in, in terms of a staffing level and the programs that we're looking to support. So I think, you know, it's something that's looked at, you know, both from the programmatic lens and also the budgetary lens in terms of trying to marry the two and making sure that there's an alignment in, in both of those. So.
Thank you. And so the second topic has to do around the, the tech spend. And, you know, this year, the district, like the world, found itself in the midst of the pandemic. And with the remote learning and hybrid learning, the order of the day to educate students, you know, there was a large purchase of Chromebooks. And I think, you know, in our discussions in recent weeks, we've, we've found that, you know, there was a, there was a large number that, that we now have come to own somewhere north of 22 or 2300. And, you know, I, I think that we'll talk in more detail about the, the strategy around devices in hopefully a very upcoming meeting very shortly. But when it comes to the tech spend, you know, these, these devices, like we see now, are needed, not needed to nearly degree that they were when we were hybrid. We have more than we're being used even under that most needed use, which is during hybrid. They have a short lifespan and I would like us to look at trying to just analyze and dispose of some of those Chromebooks. And then when we have our tech meetings soon, you know, we can look at what the strategy going forward will be in terms of the, the types of devices, the equity in terms of making sure we are doing the best by students in, in having devices. But that if we could analyze and sell off while they still are basically new and not being used, that would open up a fair sum that could go to that tech spend. And again, some money could flow to our reserves, which you made a good point about not wanting too much. But we found last year, we didn't have enough. I'd like to sort of connect the three ideas of we have what seems to be, and we can, above the district data, as I go back, too many devices that many of them are new and it'd be great to get rid of them. Other districts need them, other people need them. And to use that money for part of our tech spend rather than, you know, the budget money.
So we look, we're, we're anticipating having a conversation on the 27th of, of May. We'll have a thorough conversation about where we are from an inventory standpoint, where we, our vision is as administrative team for, for how we're going to continue to evolve, consideration for what future anticipated needs may be. Discussion, as you referenced, some of the limitations with some sort of devices. When we talk about, say, a Chromebook versus a laptop, one thing that is often overlooked, that a Chromebook's life is oftentimes longer than a laptop's life because there's just far less the break can go wrong with it. So they are devices that will be able to stay with us for some period of time. But let's have that conversation on the 27th and, and see where we stand. And look, we'll have an identification of the number of devices we have, the objectives for how they're going to be utilized moving forward and what other needs may exist. And, you know, certainly that could be a dialogue that, part of the dialogue that's entertained on the 27th.
And we make sure that that conversation is grounded in the technology plan. For me, that's a really important piece because I know that 2018, we launched a technology plan. It ends, you know, obviously it's 2021, but we had a pandemic. So I'm sure there's a change to that timeline. But the point being is that there's a tech plan and there's a whole document that we have with questions that we had around that tech plan involving a lot of what you're talking about. So when we have that convo, can we make sure that we have that together? Stick with a plan and not change plans and move, you know?
Well, I would like to interject on that. I actually think that there's a way that on the 27th, because we're in the middle of many other things, including the capital budget planning, that we really focus on this Chromebook issue, which is more discreet. And then perhaps have a part two for a more enhanced conversation of the discussion that we had in October 2018. Although of course, if we can discuss it on the 27th of May, I think that's wonderful. But I do want to prioritize the Chromebook issue.
Yeah, no, I mean, I do think that makes sense to obviously prioritize the Chromebook. Cause at this point in time, that is from a just pure numerical count, the largest piece of technology that we now have in the district that's grown over, you know, the last 18 months in particular. So, you know, as we talked about, you know, and as Dr. Harrison, you just alluded to, you know, that's a key piece of this discussion. Yeah, I, I, you know, in terms of this, I do also think it's important that we look at the inventory we have and not just the raw numbers, but also how old each of those devices are and when and whatever is the number that we think is the right number for the district to have, what that age is going to look like. Because what I, what I don't want to have happen is us to sell off devices in a month, which then only in a year, we're going to have to start buying again to replace things that are aging out. So I, I think it's important that if we do have access, that we're not going to need, that we look to try to get a return on them. But I don't want us to, you know, try and sell something now for 50 cents on the dollar or whatever it may be, only to buy it back a year later at full price. So I, I think it's important that we look at it holistically in that regard. But I, I do think it's an important part of the conversation that if, you know, whatever excess we may have, that there's a plan to try to dispose of that one way or another.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, it's a, two sort of final parts I'd add to the discussion that clearly will be a longer one. And I I mean, this is to sort of final parts I'd add to the discussion that clearly will be a longer one in the future is that the the board has the opportunity to say, well, we'd like, you know, a sum that we, you know, say that we we would like to try to, for the district to look at at selling off a number to take a certain amount and say, instead of the full budgeted tech spend, twenty or thirty thousand dollars we put in a reserve. And after we have this discussion, if we feel like we're not going to sell off a quantity, we can move that that back in. But I think I I really want to push the discussion of like, we have, let's analyze and and look at reducing the number of Chromebooks, new Chromebooks that are not being used. That'll be a year older from now, a year from now, if we don't get rid of. So if other members of the board are interested, we could say, let's take a sum and put that into a reserve instead, and we can look at it at a later point.
I mean, like I was saying, since it's, you know, the money is fungible, and since I think we're as a group in favor of the need for this particular technology. I mean, I I personally don't see the need for a reserve. I think it's important that we look at what we may want to sell as coming out the twenty-seventh. And to extent there's money, it will flow into reserves or into the the general fund as as needed, since the money is fungible. I don't see the need to really, you know, to have the artificial construct of putting money into a reserve, only for them potentially take it back out if we don't have a sale that that generates, you know, a corresponding amount.
I think the decision factor would be whether you really, as a trustee, think we should as a district, look to to achieve selling off an appropriate number of them.
So I say, let's 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 have the conversation and understand where we are. Let's have a conversation about vision as to where as administrative team, we see ourselves going, how it aligns to our strategic objectives, and and find that that comfortable place where we align. We also have to understand, you know, the life cycle of devices, where we are in that replacement cycle, and to, you know, Brian's point that we're going to have devices that we have to replace. So while we could say that right now, based upon our current distribution, we may have a couple hundred extra devices. But we, I also know that we have somewhere ballpark of ninety devices that are end of life at the end of the year. So right, they come right out of the fold. And then you're going to have a number that's going to be somewhere around four or five percent that break and fail each year outside of warranty that you have to replace. So right there, we're sitting like two hundred devices. And we're, you know, so we have to look to see where where that comfort level is, what we believe we need programmatically, how we're going to deploy them in the secondary schools, how they're going to be utilized in the elementary schools, and and understand where that comfort space is. I think it's going to be important to not only hear thinking of Jay and developing a vision from a technology director perspective, but to hear the voices of our principals in that dialogue as well, as the instructional leaders of the building, and the voices of the teachers that they're going to be representing for how devices will be used in in the classroom. So I think we'll find the conversation on the twenty-seventh to be informative. I think you'll start to see the evolution of the vision as it relates to technology that's going to be grounded in our prior planning efforts. And it'll kind of show the trajectory that the district can and will go, but obviously, we shaped that together. So I I think we'll we'll find ourselves in a place where we'll feel satisfied with the dialogue. And maybe your suggestion is one of the outcomes from from that. So let's let's look forward to the conversation and see where we land.
I guess I just hope when we, the the reason I bring it up tonight is because by the time we get to that conversation, I I I hope that we're on a process of analyzing something that has that that needs to be decided on sooner than later to be a practical decision in that, not just for the devices themselves, but for what we're talking about, the experience of the students as well. And so another aspect of that, when we're trying to determine need is, right, what are the programs, how are the uses? But also this idea of equity, and I think, you know, one, you know, this is the the thought to leave with. I've heard from our our, some of our discussions, and it's when I share in achieving, making sure we have equity, is it about making sure everybody has a a device that's lower quality or looking to make sure that we bring up all students to make sure that they have a premier learning experience when they're in a classroom? And that's often, you know, what, I mean, we're hearing from a number of voices that that hasn't been the case with these devices.
Thank you. Jane?
Yes, when we bring, when we talk about tech, I'd like to discuss storage of the Chromebooks. If the students don't need to bring them back and forth to their homes, because I know some of them walk far and uphill downhill. So maybe that's something that we could look into. I don't have any budget questions, but I wanted to say that I picked up a friend's child that down his lane the other day. And I was very impressed with the dismissal, and it was very organized and orderly, and the kids were happy and just wanted to say thanks for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Erin?
I don't have, I don't have any additional budget questions that might go into it on everything. So thank you. I think we're all in agreement about evaluating the tech and reviewing the tech plan. So I'm happy to hear that we're having a discussion on May twenty-seventh. I'm flexible on the idea, I think I I agree with Brian that the cash is somewhat fungible. So whether we put it in the reserve or we have a process around ensuring that we're buying appropriate technology, I think we can allow that to happen. Is that sort of where we're leaning? And what else? Oh, and as far as the P E aid, I think Chris gave a good discussion as to why that particular staffing is necessary.
Thank you. Over to the videotape, Maura.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. I would, I would add, although my questions regarding regarding the the budget are mainly answered. And it sounds as though the only, the only thing that I wanted to add that was that it sounded as though the the one hundred thousand dollars in reserve to be used for ventilation would would be able to access the funds for that, assuming that our plans for ventilation coincide with what the funding can be used for. Is that? And and we don't know the answer to to that. Is that accurate?
Well, I would say that the monies that we're budgeting right now for capital, what then we, you know, we've identified the initiative associated with ventilation, those are general fund dollars. So you would be able to allocate them accordingly. Those are not grant dollars from
Okay.
the any of the stimulus funds. However, when we are speaking of the stimulus funds, facility improvement is one of the key areas that we understand you're able to invest in.
Okay, so the ventilation funds, assuming that we the planning that we we are doing, the, there is no restriction on those funds. So essentially, as long as our plan is to go ahead with ventilation improvements, there would be no reason for them to be that for that plan to be changed. So I I'm I'm really just trying to understand how firm the ventilation improvements planning are, because I understand that right now they may not be right, fully laid out.
Yeah, so absolutely. So we're looking to find the opportunities and working with our professional partners to be able to enhance the quality of ventilation in our learning spaces. So as we all know, we're working closely with them now through our capital project. And that's one of the areas that we have been discussing there. But we also know that there's other spaces in our schools that could always be improved with enhanced ventilation. We know that it's, it just makes for a healthier space even before the pandemic. So yes, we are exploring the opportunities that could be before us on that front, whether it's directly associated with the capital project or an expansion of that initiative. We cannot put our finger on just yet. But none of those funds are going to be spent without it coming through dialogue with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and then ultimately, the Board of Education. So there's nothing unilateral that's going to happen here. This is going to be thoughtful, strategic planning, much like the other work that we do in the district related to the budget and our facilities improvements.
Thank you. I I think that there was something, something that was said earlier about that money that just triggered that I wanted to ask whether or not it was restricted funds in any way. So I appreciate your clarifying that. And I don't, I have any more questions about the budget, but I do have one comment to add to the discussion of of technology needs and that would just be that while I know that what the administration's vision of and and the principal's input and the director of technologies leadership as far as what our tech vision should look like has been should always be balanced by what families also also want and what kids can use. And I hope that we can balance that input in in some way as as, you know, this this planning goes forward, because we have so much community input at this point on technology. So that's, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think at this point, for the questions, we can move on to four point one, which is our budget adopt. So I always create this a local vote, or is it just a general voice vote?
Not just a consensus vote.
So all in favor of our budget this year and adopting the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Any motion?
Yeah, you need a motion. Yes, yes.
Is there a motion to adopt our twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
Don't move, sir.
So all in favor of of adopting the budget, say aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve our twenty-one, twenty-two property tax report card?
So move. Aye.
So we now have our community comment periods. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to make a comment, now is the time to do so. And put your name, address in the Q and A feature of Zoom. Now, I I saw one, I saw one.
Tanya's out there.
I saw one.
Good questions, Tanya?
So so we now have our consent agenda, so no comments. Are there any questions on tonight's consent agenda?
No.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So our our next meeting is seven thirty on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh here and via Zoom. And now is there a motion to adjourn for an executive session for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to the employment history of particular persons?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.